McCarrigan here. Phillips.
Here.
Stricker.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Join me in the Pledge of Deeds.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Two, or three, for public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. It's about Tom and Caressa. Four, notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than 24 hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda. Do we have any changes?
No changes, Vice Mayor McCarrigan.
Five, citizens with business that scheduled on the agenda as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Do we have any emergency actions? Okay. Six, closed session. A, council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the item is on the agenda as per section 84-1410 of the Nebraska Revise Statutes. Seven, consent calendar. Items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests them and let them be considered separately. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Stricker, second by Solomon. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan? Yes, Stricker?
Yes.
Public hearings. Council to conduct a public hearing set for this date at 6:00 PM to consider the rezone of Lot 1, Block 1, Baumgar's addition, commonly identified as land southeast of the southern terminus of Delta Drive, parcel ID 010230610, from A agricultural to C3 heavy commercial. Open the public hearing.
Mayor and council, at the June Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission made a positive recommendation on this rezone request. It's for the field just northeast of the current Baumgar's store. Currently zoned agriculture. They want to change it. They're wanting to change it to C3, which is surrounded by on three sides. You'll see the comprehensive plan. Doesn't list C3 as one of the appropriated zones for Highway 26 Commercial, but since it's surrounded by three sides, don't see a reason to change it or to be against it. Yeah. Any questions?
I do my, uh, vice mayor.
Okay.
The, so, what is the appropriate uses in Highway 26?
C2, PVC, O1P, and R4. So, I mean, there's not too much of a difference between C2 and C3, main thing being warehouses and car dealerships.
Okay. I'll raise your ball. The rest of my questions for the plat. All right.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Nine, resolution and ordinances. Council to discuss and consider action on the preliminary plat, final plat variance request and contract for public improvement on lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Baumgar's addition, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution and contract for public improvements.
All right, Mayor and council, at the August Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed the preliminary and final plat for the Baumgar's addition. So this is that field that was just in the rezone, as well as the current store. Both currently are unplatted land. The, they're wanting to build a new store on the unplatted, or what would be Lot 1, on the northeast of the current store. With this plat, there's a variance request under chapter 21. Council can grant variances for chapter 21. So, Delta Drive will be extended to the current Baumgar's store. And instead of requiring a cul-de-sac like we did for the Clemens Reinhardt replat, we propose a turnaround easement since it would only serve one property. So there's a turnaround easement that would need an easement, or a variance, to be granted with this approval. Additionally, there's no water main currently serving Lot 1, Block 1. So there's contract for public improvements included with this plat. That includes looping a water main from the current 25th Street southeast to Menards down to Highland Road just south of the current store. Sewer will also be extended down Delta Drive. Delta Drive will have a short extension as well. There's fire hydrant, curb and gutter sidewalks included with this. So it's a little bit complicated, but it's a pretty simple subdivision. Any questions?
I don't know when it's time, but I'll just start asking. So, in terms, so the, and the plat stuff is where we establish easements, right?
Correct.
So there's a couple of things. It's great to see the water line loop from Delta and 25th showing down to Highland Road, but is there, is there any need for a loop on Lot 1, Block 1 itself based on the size and distance of, size of the lot, the size of the building? Has that detail been thought about yet?
That would be detailed in the preliminary plat. Main thing with the plating is just ensure every lot has access to water and sewer.
So if there needed to be one in there for, or code required water supply, for example, would that be a private line then?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yep.
And then second would be the, being asked to do a variance for a cul-de-sac, and I think that you, that was pretty clear on the, what I, my view of a cul-de-sac purpose is for large fire apparatus, snowplows, sort of things. And so, is, is what you have on there represent a preliminary design of like a hammerhead? Or what is that dark shaded, or does that just represent the easement dedicated?
That dash line just represents the easement. So it would just be the existing parking lot with a formal easement dedicated to ensure there's clearance for fire trucks and garbage trucks and whatnot.
I do, I was wondering, maybe, does the fire department, have they been contacted about this? So the reason I'm asking at this stage, I know it seems preliminary, but I'll just keep repeating myself, is it's nice to know all of these larger items up front for the purposes of budgeting and planning, to just make sure it works there as we're plating, because I know there's only so many plats and replats before you have to kind of start over.
Right.
So, that's why I ask those.
Yeah.
And, and something that's useful, not just that check's a box.
Right, yep. Yeah, fires is consulted. So when you apply, public works and fire are definitely included in it.
Okay.
Zach, is that building right above the Mouse Curse part partially off the, onto the other lot?
Uh, to the, oh, the Frank Implement Building, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, the one that's right inside there?
Yeah, there's a, a whole history there, but it's being handled privately. It's not on Baumgar's property, though Baumgar's property does that 45-degree angle.
Okay, that red line.
Okay, thank you.
I guess there is one more that I forgot, and it's, it's related to the existing Baumgar's Lot 2, that's Lot 2?
Yep.
Okay. Would, you know the plans for that, or have they been, has anybody told?
Warehouse storage is what we've been informed, so.
Or Baumgar's, or somebody else? And I noticed there's a fence with a sliding gate on. Apparently trucks can navigate, it doesn't look like it's used, or at least that's what I'm told. So apparently trucks that deliver to the, where the existing building is can navigate in and out to the north?
I presume, yeah, I don't know. There's no easement between the private owners to offer access, so I'm not sure what the history of the gate is.
If for some reason down the road they found that it needed to be that, would that be a fairly uncomplicated process to establish that between those two lots?
It would be pretty simple. You know, NAPA, that's currently unplatted, so if it came an issue during plating, it'd be require, require part of the plating process, or if it's a private issue, the two private property owners can come up to an easement and get that recorded themselves.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any other questions?
Zach had one, so, we'll rezone it and get things moving. Do you know if they intend to seek TIF funding for the construction, or will they just use their own funds?
It'll just be their own funds, since it's outside a blight area. I know we had that one, like Triple Peaks, it was blighted outside the corporate limits, but this is, wasn't blighted, so they would not be eligible.
Okay.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve on the preliminary plat, final plat and variance request?
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Solomon, second by Phillips. Do we have any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan? Yes. Stricker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
B, council to discuss and consider action on the first reading of the ordinance to rezone Lot 1, Block 1, Baumgar's addition, from A agricultural to C3 heavy commercial. Go ahead.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, dealing with zoning, amending section 25-1-4 by updating the official zoning district map to show that Lot 1, Block 1, Baumgar's addition, located in the east half of the southwest quarter of section 19, township 22 North, range 54 West of the 6th Principal Meridian, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, containing an area of 8.76 acres more or less, which was previously zoned as agricultural, A, is now zoned heavy commercial, C-3, repealing prior section 25-1-4, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions? All right. C, council to discuss and consider action on the first reading of the ordinance to annex lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Baumgar's addition, Block 1, Country Commercial Business Park, and attract a land situated in the southwest quarter of the section 19, township 22 North, range 54 West of the 6PM, commonly identified as land northeast of the intersection of Highland Road and US Highway 26.
So at the August Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission made a positive recommendation on the approval of the annexation request by Next Generation Properties of Nebraska LLC, which is Baumgar's Mountain Tower and Land LLC for the tower, that's Viero, and then Know How LLC, which is NAPA and High Tech and Frank Implement.
All right.
Zach, I have one quick question. So, on the map that you have with the zoning, that one square corner on the far right side of the property there, that's just the communications tower?
Correct, yep.
So just for future, do we need to rezone that? Because it's, is M for manufacturing?
Yeah, down the road, and, you know, it's not really hurting anything, can't really build anything on it the way it is, but to clean up the zoning map, yeah, we'll
That's the only thing I noticed.
We'll look to rezon that in the future.
Okay. Couple clarifications. Is the, the, what appears to be a road on the right side of that outside, is that their access in to maintain that tower? In other words, it won't be landlocked by what we do up this way?
Yeah, so there's
For access?
In the future, that can become, yeah, part of the, that's currently railroad right-of-way, the old track. And then on what would be Lot 1, Block 1, Baumgar's addition, there is an access easement, so there's a formal, and per that plat for the country, for Country Commercial Business Park, the plat specifies that that easement would become a, an access to that lot when, when needed.
But apparently they can use what they have now?
Yeah, yep.
And then just to verify the, the piece above, the new Baumgar's Lot 1 between Delta, or, yeah, Delta Drive or 25th, and that is in the city?
Correct, yep, that's Menards property.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. So do we have a motion? Oh, consider action on the first reading, so I'll go ahead and read the first reading.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, annexing real estate platted as Block 1, Country Commercial Business Park, situated in the southeast quarter of section 19, township 22 North, range 54 West of the 6th Principal Meridian, Lot 1, Block 1, Baumgar's addition, Lot 2, Block 1, Baumgar's addition. Unplatted real estate described as that part of the east one-half, southwest one-half of section 19, township 22 North, range 54 West of the 6th Principal Meridian, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, is defined by the meets and bounds in the caption of the ordinance heading, amending section 25-1-3.1 of the municipal code and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
All right. D, council to discuss and consider action on the first reading of the ordinance adopting the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill for fiscal year 2025-2026.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, to provide for an effective date and provide for publication in pamphlet form.
Anything to be added?
Do you guys have any questions or want to discuss anything?
No.
Kind of did the, at lunch, yep.
E, council to consider action on the second reading of the ordinance amending miscellaneous police fees.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, amending miscellaneous police fees for police services at chapter 6, article 6, sections 33.1 and 33.2, repealing prior sections of the municipal code, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Once again, any questions, comments? All right. F, council to consider action on the third reading of the ordinance updating utility user fees, including water, sewer fees, and solid waste collection.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, amending and changing chapter 6, article 6, for solid waste collection fees at section 6-6-23, 6-6-24, 6-6-27, amending and changing sewer user fees, including surcharge for stormwater regulatory requirements, at section 6-6-19, 6-6-20, and 6-6-22, amending and changing the water service fees at section 6-6-28, all in chapter 6, article 6 of the municipal code, repealing prior provisions of the municipal code, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance updating utility user fees?
So move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Stricker, second by Solomon. Any questions or comments?
So I just want to make sure, so that the, I mean, the amended sewer, monthly sewer charge based on the water, water use during the applicable monthly billing period, use period as determined by chapter 18. I seem to recall that was February, is?
I believe it's February, is that right? February?
Yeah.
That's, that's thought to be a time where you're not watering your, your yard, you're not washing your car in your driveway, you're just using it in-house.
So, so the base measure is assuming to go down. So more favorable, favorable to the user rates they pay as opposed to, say, July or August?
Yeah, I think it's an accurate representation of how they use the sewer.
Call the roll, please. Stricker?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
G, council to discuss and consider action on the resolution supporting the future interstate highway formula program, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Mayor and council, this is Deb Cotier, and she is kind of an expert on the Heartland Express, I think. I'm always impressed, so she'll explain what's going on here, so.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Deb Cotier. I am from Shadron, and I'm the Director of the Economic Development Office there. But for the past, I think it's eight years, I have chaired the Heartland Expressway Association. And I hope you are all at least familiar with what the Heartland Expressway is. It's a four-lane divided highway. We're trying to connect at the, at the city, or the state borders of Colorado and South Dakota, and have it go all the way through the Panhandle. We've been working on this project for over 30 years. Our organization is part of a larger sort of umbrella group called the Ports to Plains Alliance. And that includes the states all the way from the Mexico border, Texas, Arizona, Colorado, Nebraska, both the Dakotas, Wyoming, and a little bit of Montana, in an effort to connect all of those routes, literally from the ports on the, on the coast all the way up to Canada. If you remember, some of you might be old enough to remember this, the Eisenhower Interstate Program was designed by Congress and started in the 50s and created what we now refer to as the Interstate Highway System. And if you see a map of that, you'll notice pretty quickly that almost all of those original interstates go from coast to coast, from east to west. And what we really have is a major gap in connecting folks from north to south. And particularly as the, the changes in how we extract oil and gas and those sorts of things within our own borders, the need for traffic and transportation north and south has become more important. So in about the mid 80s, Congress decided that the way they would sort of designate what that next round of interstates might be was to create what they referred to as federally designated high priority corridors, of which the Heartland was named, number 14, of about 40 of them that were created. The problem is, no money was ever dedicated to paying for those systems. In the 50s, the share was 90% federal funds, 10% state funds. As you can imagine, roads have gotten considerably more expensive since then, and there's absolutely no additional dollars other than what individual states have been able to create on their own. Nebraska, for example, created what we call the Build Nebraska Act, and there's some funds dedicated to our expressway system. So what we are attempting to do as a multi-state federally designated high priority corridor is to move to the next step, and that begins by planning for that route to be an interstate. Right now, on the very southern end of it, not quite all the way south, but from Lubbock South in Texas, about 100 miles of Interstate 27 does exist. And the state of Texas has held sort of a feasibility study as well as an interstate expansion study, and I've determined that they, they want it to be interstate, and they're looking to build what's referred to as future interstate routes. So these three resolutions, and I'll just talk about them together, and I understand you probably need to vote on them separately, but we're asking for, for support on three basic ideas. First of all, we want to encourage Congress to put in what they call the Surface Transportation Authorization Bill, dedicated formula funding for interstate development. And that means that it is money in addition to what states already are allotted with their formulas, that they determine how many miles of roads you have, how much your gas tax is, all those things. So this would be in addition to that. The second thing is, in order to do that, the entire route, not just that Texas piece, needs to be designated as future interstate. That designation literally just says, we, we think this rises to the level of being important enough that we think at some point it should be an interstate. It does not require DOTs to do it. It does nothing but identify that route as something that either the federal government or state governments all agree should be a future interstate. And then the final thing we're asking support for is, in order to really make the case, if you will, to Congress, we are asking all of the folks in the Panhandle of, of Nebraska, as well as the other states up and down the corridor, to also support the request to do a multi-state feasibility study. We can talk about how big an impact it could have on Nebraska. We have an economic impact statement on a four-lane divided highway, albeit 20 years old, we do have that. But what really makes it fair and equitable and really tells the whole story is if we do that across the total corridor. So it would include several states, multi-state interstate feasibility study. So those are the three things that are asked for individually in those, in those resolutions. So you ask why are we doing this? It is, in fact, our ammunition when our organization, Heartland Expressway included, goes with Ports to Plains to Washington to talk to our congressional delegation about whether or not they can get on board to support future funding, whether it's state by state or the big, the big ask. And we really believe that by including all of those states, the overall economic impact and return on investment would be greater than any of each of the states separately. So that's why we're doing it at this time. It just happens that that's the new law, the new bill for the Service Transportation Act will be considered, and they're beginning to put together pieces of it yet this fall, and that's why we're all about trying to gather some support. And then the final thing I will say is, whether or not currently the Nebraska Department of Transportation would be in favor of this or not, will, will really depend on what these studies show. And it will also depend on whether or not there's enough support from their colleagues and other states to go, to go ahead with this. Each one of the state DOT directors serves on a committee within the American Society of Highway Transportation Officials, ASHTO. And these sorts of big picture discussions take place, and this, this bill, or this supposed language, really focuses on what their requirements would be, or what their recommendations are. So currently, all of the DOT directors along the route have had an opportunity to weigh in an ASHTO about projects like this. So it's not like they've not heard of the whole idea. I think they've all just been very cautious because they have to have enough money to maintain their highways. And that's about all the money that they've been receiving from the feds for a number of years. And so we're going to start the ground, the grassroots level interest and excitement and, and support for this, so that they have some cover when they go to their congressman and say, "We have X member of constituents represented by all of you who have supported resolutions," to sort of show the, the benefit and the reason why we need to move forward with this. I would be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Got a few. So I think Jerry and Kevin went to your meeting, but this is probably stuff they've already heard, but. So north of Shadron, once you hit the South Dakota border, that's four-lane?
Correct.
And up to Alliance is four-lane. Do you know if the state's next project is to connect that as the next project?
Yeah, the state's very next project is to finish Miniter to 385.
Okay.
Which is been on the books for a number of years, and they finally got all the input and public hearings and all of that. There will be some dirt turned on that so that they can spend the money that Senator Fisher got for us a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Majority of that will be finished in 2027. North of Shadron, they are going to completely resurface, including the, the shoulders, go down to bedrock, and add a couple passing lanes, so that that would be up to what the standards are for a super, super 2 highway. And that will be, that will start in 2026. The part that's still to be planned from Alliance to Shadron and/or the junction from 20 and 385, that is probably three years out to even be put on the planning stage for the state of Nebraska. And we are not under any And we are not under any delusion that this is going to go in Congress just because we ask this year. We know it's going to take a few years. We are not asking the DOTs to, you know, drop what you're doing and come join with us. We know that that effort and that planning and that budgeting has taken place already. We don't want them to stop doing that. And so we continue to have those conversations with Doug Hovind as well as Director Kramer about where we think we can be of help to them as well. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I just have one more question. So you said in the fifties it was a ninety-ten split. Is it currently the same split for funding?
That's, you know, it's a little bit up for discussion at this point because we've not got the champion person identified that's going to literally carry this as their legislation. We think minimum, ninety-ten.
Okay.
There may be places and states, Nebraska may be one of them, who even ten percent of the cost of bumping that up to interstate standards is going to be a pretty heavy lift. So is there a way to do it ninety-five-five? Are there other things that the state could do in lieu of some of this cost? And all of that would be decided, of course, quite a ways down the road. Right now, we have, just for your information, that all the counties that the route goes through, Kimball, Scottsbluff, Boxbeet, and Dawes, have all voted in favor of this. City of Kimball, City of Alliance, City of Gearing, and City of Shadrin have all passed these resolutions. Today, the Dawes County Tourism Group, which is all of Northwest Nebraska, passed the resolutions. The Panhandle Area Development District has passed the resolutions. We've not really had anybody have serious concerns about it. I did have one commissioner say, well, are they going to take more right-of-way? And I said, possibly, probably, if it actually goes to interstate standards. But that exact route, for example, from Alliance to the state line north, we don't know what that will be. Probably not going to come to a ninety-degree turn at twenty and three eighty-five like it currently does. And therein lies the issue, because if it is a reliever route, that's the fancy new word for bypass, that will, some people will not be happy.
Well, the last question I was going to ask you is, would it have a negative effect on Shadrin if there was a bypass?
You know, I've been at the upper level of what Shadrin needs for a long time, whether it was chamber work thirty years ago, or working for Governor Nelson and Senator Nelson, or this position that I have today. There are pluses and minuses on both sides of that. I would guess that there will be some savings and some benefit by not having every single truck come through Shadrin, much like Kimball discovered after they sort of caved in and allowed the bypass or reliever out there. There will be private landowners that are not happy if this comes through their parcel on that beautiful piece of ground south of Shadrin. It's going to be difficult, but that's what Department of Roads does. And they found it pretty difficult to get rights of way even on three eighty-five south of Alliance. So that's a process that they will go through if, in fact, we get it in the bill, if, in fact, the study is funded, and if, in fact, that study says it's feasible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I think that the information you provided in the resolutions from the economic impact, national security, safety speaks for itself. And I think it's, to me, it's probably warranted, but I'm not a traffic expert. However, I did have the fortuitous opportunity to go to Amarillo and back this weekend and with eighty-seven, two eighty-seven. And something needs to be done with the amount of traffic that's there. The thing that sticks out to me is that, when I went to this, was the, if I recall, and you can correct me, twelve of the twenty largest feedlots in the country reside along the corridor, and a large amount of potash from trade from Canada comes in for fertilizer, and there was probably something else.
We refer to this as the corridor that transports the majority of the US's fuel, fiber, and food. Yeah, it's absolutely true. And it's growing. If you look at numbers about what they project trade will be with Mexico, for example, in twenty years, and they're already, and I'm not exaggerating, moving three million people a day across that border at El Paso. It's phenomenal, the amount of activity and trade and business that goes on down there. And the truck traffic, when it gets across here, it's got to go somewhere. Right now, it's going up Interstate thirty-five for the most part. And they would be happy to have it relieve some of that, as well as I-25 in Colorado would be happy to have some of their traffic relieved to another interstate.
In depth, there's no interstate between twenty-five and twenty-nine. So there's no interstate in Nebraska?
We do not have a north-south interstate in Nebraska. We're one of the few states that does not have more than one interstate.
And then there's a pretty big spread, the further north you go, between a north-south interstate, the gap just widens.
Correct, because twenty-five angles to the west. Twenty-nine goes pretty much straight, but it's in Iowa, and it's South Dakota and North Dakota. You know, we just happen to be on this side of that big river, so we didn't get the interstate.
But twenty-five doesn't go border to border. What's the gap between a border-to-border interstate?
The one, the next to the west, west that goes border to border, and the next one east that goes border to border. What's that gap?
Well, the next one east is twenty-nine. And between it and thirty-five, they connect together, they go coast to coast or north to south. I don't know about how far you'd have to go to get an interstate. I mean, it goes from New Mexico to Montana, it goes up to ninety. So it goes the majority of the north-south. Twenty-five does. But I don't know what the next one west is. And I don't, I'm not going to guess.
So Deb, one last question for you. So running south to north, every state that would be involved in this already has portions that are made, it's just getting it all connected?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, North Dakota's going to do some great stuff on improving eighty-three, I think it is, north of El Fush, after you get into the North Dakota side. They finally are going to cut loose with some gas money, oil and gas funds, to do some really difficult territory through some badlands and bring the four lane south from I-94 quite a ways.
Okay.
That's good. All right, any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Do you need to sign this? Doesn't matter.
That would be good. So we have a motion to approve the resolution supporting the future interstate highway formula program.
Do we have to do this one at a time?
I think the way it's on the agenda.
I make a motion to support, to make a resolution and support a future interstate highway formula program.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Stricker, second by Phillips. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
H. Council to discuss and consider action on the resolution supporting the future interstate feasibility study for Heartland Expressway, Theodore Roosevelt Expressway, and portion of Ports to Plains high priority corridors, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
For this one, I'll just say so moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Stricker, second by Solomon. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Stricker?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Council to discuss and consider action on the resolution supporting the future interstate designation for Heartland Expressway, Theodore Roosevelt Expressway, and a portion of the Ports to Plains high priority corridors, and numbering future interstate segments, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Solomon, second by Phillips. Once again, any questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten petitions, communications, and public input. H. Council to receive a presentation from Nate Rock with West Nebraska Football Club to discuss and consider action on a proposal to waive the fee for the club to use their soccer complex.
It's Western Nebraska, by the way. It's okay. It's not a big deal. People get around out there. I'm Nate Rock. I am the director of Western Nebraska Football Club. Thank you for having me today. Western Nebraska Football Club currently serves nine hundred area youth, making it the fourth-largest soccer club in the state right now. My guess is that makes it probably the biggest youth organization in the Panhandle. We are a nonprofit run entirely by volunteers. We have both competitive and recreational programs, and regardless of people's ability to financially support the club, we find a program and ensure that they get to play. We, in the last year, have spent nearly thirty thousand dollars in improving the soccer complex. That included upgraded to brand-new scoreboards. That also included a state-of-the-art sound system. It also included a locker room and meeting room for club members and teams. Because of that, and because of those improvements, the board has asked that for this year, the fee rental be waived, the rental fee for the field be waived in lieu of those funds put towards the complex. As the director, I told them that I would pursue that, and so here I am. And the fee currently sits at forty-five hundred dollars, and we're asking for one year of that being relieved for us.
The funds that you raised, was that fundraising by the teams that came up?
No, that came purely through registration fees for us. We do offer scholarship programs to all our kids, but there is a fee that runs, depending on the year, seventy-eight dollars per kid to play in our recreational program. It's much higher for our competitive program, but most of that came from registration fees.
So Nate, I'm going to ask you, if we waive the fees for you, do you have an idea what you can use the money for for this next year for improvements?
Well, for improvements, we're still looking at, of course, we've had this conversation before, we would love to continue to look into improvements in the lights and bathrooms of the complex. ADA accessibility is a big issue for us as well, but those are things that we're constantly looking for and planning for and working with various organizations to try to improve the complex as best we can.
And with your youth that you work with, is it primarily spring, fall, or both?
We, our primary season runs, basically, we start in May, and we'll run through March with programs. That's the youth we serve during that time, anywhere from ages four to eighteen. We take the spring off because most of our volunteers are heavily involved with our high school programs, and soccer's a high school, or a spring sport in high school. So most of our volunteers go and coach at the high school level or the middle school level. So we take basically March through June off, and then we start back up in July. So we start organizing, May is when registration opens, June is when we begin to really start to get into practice and things like that.
But you have a season going right now.
Season's going right now. So if you ever have a question about what it looks like to have nine hundred players come up to the complex on a Saturday morning, and you will, it's pretty impressive to see all those kids and all those families up there.
Did it go through March, you said?
We run, we run an outdoor program that ends basically at the end of October, then we run an indoor program that runs from in the winter months.
I'm more just worried about the outdoor there.
Yep, yep. So we run from, basically, we're using it from June to November, basically.
Do you have any financial information for us to help make this decision, or like your, what your fund balance is?
Yeah, we have full budget. I don't have that stuff with me right now. I can provide that. The board, we're run by an executive board with a treasurer director. I'm the director, treasurer, secretary, I think we can provide that if needed.
I mean, to ask to waive something that I have to explain to several other groups, or you can waive ours, I'd need to, I'd want to see some level of financial information.
Sure.
And Kevin, can you verify that the improvements were made up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
They were made, yeah.
Yeah, if you haven't seen the new scoreboard, it's really nice.
I said you can hear it in Gearing. It's turned on.
Here's my back hearing.
So it's great improvements. I get the scoreboard, but the sound part of it, what's that? Is it like a Jumbotron?
No, we thought about putting like a Jumbotron, but the sound, there's three different entities that actually use it, but the sound system is used to make announcements and things like that. When we have major competition up there, like our tournament finals, they go into the, they go into that field and use the sound system.
The foot club, the non-WNCC and non-high school, your club?
Yep.
Okay.
And I am the activities athletic director at Scottsbluff High School, but I am not here in that capacity by any means, so.
So maybe this is for Kevin, I guess. Can you get a sense of what kind of resources that, what the city does up there compared to, say, a typical park elsewhere?
You know, we didn't, we didn't look at the numbers, but I will tell you that there's staff dedicated up there to that park all the time.
That's huge.
So we have people and equipment that's dedicated to that park.
One, two?
I know one for sure, but I think he has people that help him too. They do other things in the city as well, but that is their primary responsibilities. So I think it's probably three that are up there all the time, along with some pretty expensive equipment, too. We have one of our wide-area mowers up there.
So Kevin, to tie between the two of what you're discussing, if we waived the forty-five hundred, it would have no significant negative impact on maintaining the park? Would be okay?
However, I would say, what do we tell the other groups?
Like the high school.
Yeah, they can contribute thirty thousand as well.
Still standing in front of you.
To answer that, I would just say that the club runs as a nonprofit and a charitable organization that brings the community together.
So did I just take the, those comments to mean that just the foot club provided the scoreboard and the sound system funded the entire thing?
No, the WNCC did as well.
Group effort.
There were funds from tourism.
Tourism as well, yes. No, we're not asking for the forty-five hundred to be waived for the high school, just for the football.
For the youth.
Just for the youth, yeah.
And it is a great program. There's so many kids that get involved in that and go all the way through, and it's definitely a great program for the community.
What's the age range with the club, with the youth?
We start as young as, we've had kids as young as three, and we go up to as old as nineteen. So in both our recreational and competitive programs. So we tried to have something for everybody.
And it seems like everybody's up there on Saturday.
I did drive up there, and there's lots of.
It's very busy.
But I still would be interested in the financial so that we did more due diligence.
Sure, I can provide that.
Can you provide an idea of what the financials are like? Is this, I think you guys are doing okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Vice Mayor, I guess I'd make a motion to table until we get information to better, make a better decision from a financial point of view.
Well, I think we're in a situation where that fee was probably due August first. Possibly, is that correct?
I don't know if I've seen the letter yet. I don't know.
Because it says it starts on August first, and it goes through.
Are you talking about the agreement?
Yeah. Yeah, so we're kind of past the due date. So.
So whether we're past four weeks or six weeks, um,
Yeah.
This doesn't really matter to me, as long as we do it, um, kind of consider that thoughtfully instead of just guessing. So that's my motion.
We could, yeah. You, you got a motion, so.
I don't know, do we have a second, or?
I'll second the table, uh, for the next meeting.
Yeah, to, to the next meeting for sure.
Yeah, and then we can get you going.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll please.
Yep, thank you for your time, thanks.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan? No. Stricker?
Yes.
Phillips?
No.
Doesn't seem to.
So we're not, we're not tabling it?
Okay.
Okay.
So, stay put.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the proposal to waive the fee?
I will make a motion to approve it, um, I think that they've done such great things for the community and the great improvements you've done up there, I think it's for one year, I think it's reasonable.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Call the roll please, Stricker.
No.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McCarrigan? Yes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Nate.
I do have a volleyball game, I gotta run, so.
Okay.
All right, the council to receive a presentation from Riverside Discovery Center.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Councilman, City Manager, and Scottsburg community at large, I hope everyone's doing well and, uh, enjoyed your Labor Day weekend. I've been actually feeling a little bit homesick recently, and South Africa's a little bit of a backwards country, so it actually made me feel at home to have a, a holiday commemorating Labor, but you, you kind of take the day off.
We could pull it up, I think.
We've also managed to, uh, um, obviously acquire Jade, our, our newest, um, addition to the zoo, our, our young mountain lion, and, um, over the last two weeks, we've managed to introduce her to Jasper, and that's been very, very successful, so, um, yeah, that's the photo of Sillerin, and then, um, there should be one of Jade as well, if not, there is a, a very good video on our Facebook page of the two of them playing together, and it's, it's pretty positive, so, yeah. Uh, sadly, we've also had to say goodbye to, um, some of our beloved, uh, more geriatric animals, so Dwight, the bearded dragon, who was a big hit with our educational department, um, yeah, he, uh, unfortunately, uh, his quality of life was, uh, was getting too low, and so we had to call that, um, as with Leonard, the swift fox, um, he went into congenital heart failure more recently, actually, about two weeks ago, and so we had to make that call as well. Um, but, uh, you know, their stories remind us of the depth of responsibility, uh, that we have, and, uh, the bond that we share with animals entrusted to us. Uh, improvements have been, uh, ongoing, um, across the grounds, so the large fence behind the Munchak yard that has been down for quite some time has been reinstalled, uh, with the new gate configuration to make it safer and also more efficient for our staff, uh, and then, not to mention as well, uh, our updated concessions, uh, stand, uh, which was done with the help of Twenty-First Century, um, to actually bring that into the Twenty-First Century, so we're quite happy with that. Um, we've also got our reptile house, Sillerin, which is, um, uh, was up there for a moment, um, which is under renovations, there we go. Um, so, the idea there is, obviously, it's been boarded up for quite some time, we've installed some mini splits with the help of, uh, Precision Air, um, they were quite generous and helped us out in, in, in that manner, and then we've been raising funds as well, um, you know, to, to, uh, get that up and going, so, uh, the, we've put the mini splits in, the idea now is to, um, you know, uh, build the enclosure on the inside and then theme it correctly, so that it's really naturalistic and gives a very good, um, kind of, uh, natural environment for those animals and a good learning experience, and then we can take the plastic down and, um, have a, a very nice functional reptile house. Um, we've also managed to, uh, enter into the final stages of completing the closeout for our shovel-ready grant, um, which was awarded to us, um, at the start of twenty-twenty, and so that's been, um, uh, pretty vital in, in providing us with some, uh, in, infrastructure upgrades over the last four years. Now, our visitors have also enjoyed some exciting updates too, so, uh, we, we renewed our, um, agreement with, uh, with Pepsi, and so we've got some new Pepsi coolers, uh, in the concession stand and gift shop, which, um, people have been quite grateful for. Um, the pond food continues to be, uh, served in our signature, um, uh, souvenir cups, which we've actually got a, a really new and fun, exciting design, so I encourage you to get out there and get a souvenir cup, cause you can refill them as well. And then to celebrate, uh, RDC's seventy-fifth anniversary, we also launched, we also launched a, uh, a commemorative line of hoodies, shirts, stickers, and caps as well, so those are available at the gift shop. Um, you know, it just gives the guests a chance to take a piece of the seventy-fifth anniversary home with them. Um, now, what I would like to mention, and I know you're, you're probably interested in this, Jerry, cause you're a numbers guy, um, our, uh, our general admissions are slightly down, it's down about about six percent, but our memberships have increased by about twenty percent, um, year-to-date, so, um, you know, it's just showing us some real support from the community where it's not just coming in once, people want to actually, uh, return more and more. Um, behind every success story is obviously the people that make it happen, uh, so this year, we, uh, have continued to invest not only in our staff, but also in our docents and our volunteers, um, and so that, that's been everything from, you know, uh, learning about chinchillas and hedgehogs at Flyover Brewery, which happened, um, two weeks ago, uh, or sorry, uh, three weeks ago, uh, to delivering hands-on educational, um, events at numerous educational environments. Um, so our docent team has become more involved at a time where we, we need them to help out, and that's been great to see. You know, our volunteers and staff make RDC a true community hub, and we are so grateful for their efforts. I'm happy to announce that we have seen massive growth in our educational output, having already doubled the amount of educational visits that we had for the entirety of last year, so that's pretty nice to, to see. Uh, with respect to fundraising, we've, we've also been active in this department, earlier this year, we collaborated with Main Street Market and Education and Donation Drive, which raised, uh, a little over, um, a thousand eight hundred dollars, Main Street Market then took it upon themselves to actually round that up to two thousand dollars, so that, that was very generous, and, and, uh, you know, obviously helps us support the animals and, um, grow even further. In addition to this, I'd like to remind everyone that we've got our seventy-fifth anniversary banquet, uh, on October third, so, um, that's gonna feature, obviously, a silent auction, a live auction, um, some games, and then, uh, you know, the most important part, a slow roast beef meal, um, so, you know, you're more than welcome to get your tickets, uh, at the zoo gift shop. And then soon, um, I'm happy to announce that giraffes will actually be coming to RDC, but not in the way that everyone thinks. Um, so in collaboration with Dry Creek Designs, uh, we're gonna be getting a new three-D, uh, giraffe sculpture, uh, that'll be installed in the, in the zoo, uh, entranceway, and that'll be basically our version of Giving Tree, so people will be able to buy nameplates and actually, uh, get their name permanently put up at, uh, at the zoo, so, um, that just helps us to support our mission a bit further. Um, lastly, I'd like to take, uh, a moment to honor the memory of Shirley Mead, uh, one of our docent emeritus, so, uh, our docent emeritus, that's twenty-five plus years of service, and she sadly recently passed away, so she's left a bit of a hole in her heart, but, um, Shirley's decades of service, passion for education, and dedication to animals remain an inspiration, and her legacy lives on in the work that we do and the work that you guys continue to support, so, thank you. As you can see, so far, this year has been a, a year of growth, resilience, and community for RDC, we faced challenges, celebrated milestones, and strengthened the ones that make the place special. Um, to my staff, the volunteers, supporters, and community partners such as yourself, I just wanna say thank you, um, we couldn't, uh, we couldn't do this without you, and as you've seen, uh, together, we're building a brighter future for Riverside Discovery Center, so, thank you. Any questions?
Yep, what was your, uh, membership percentage increase?
Uh, twenty percent.
Twenty?
Yeah.
What is the membership cost?
So we've got, we've got various different, um, levels, so the most popular is gonna be the family membership, so that gets you two adults and then two kids, um, or if you wanna, if you're a grandparent, it's, uh, two grandparents and your grandkids, I'm just whoever you name on that, that's gonna set you back about a hundred and twenty dollars, yeah. That's the most popular one.
And what was the date of the, uh, auction and?
Oh, the, uh, the banquet is October third, at the Garing Civic Center.
Tickets at the gift shop?
Tickets at the gift shop, yes, sir.
On the shovel grant, um, so that was in twenty-twenty, and that one's, uh, run its course, is there a, a gap until you can reapply for another grant similar to that?
As far as I know, uh, no, uh, not with the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, who's that, that wanted that grant, um, as far as I'm aware, there is no, you know, um, call of time.
Okay, just curious.
So that was done, spent, complete?
That one's complete, we're just finalizing now, um, they, you know, they, they come back with, oh, where's this, where's that, and then we, we provide it to them, so it's just kind of crossing the Ts and dotting the Is.
A session of, did you do, you said you were gonna?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And we do have a draft agreement, um, can I have a copy, this board's seen it?
Yeah.
So we're working on it, we plan to have it on the next council agenda, so you'll, you'll be seeing that in, in the coming weeks.
Anything else? Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, thanks, Kyle.
All right, eleven, reports from staff boards and commissions, a council to discuss and consider action on a funding request from the Midwest Theater to support sound and critical lighting upgrades.
I have a packet for each of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it Kyle? Um, I think memberships are up, cause they, they wanna go listen to him talk.
This is a new packet to be filled.
Yeah, yeah, so I put that, um, in your packet, as well as, um, on the other side is, uh, our upcoming fundraiser, our annual fundraiser, and then just so also, so that you know, behind that is, um, an upcoming show that we have in February, um, which is the Darcy Lynn, um, the tranquilli- tranquilli?
Ventriloquist.
Ventriloquist, that, I, obviously, you know, I'll never be a ventriloquist, uh, that we have coming in February, um, but I, I will get to all of that. Um, but, good evening, and, um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to, um, speak to you today, and I'm, I'm the executive director of the Midwest Theater, and I'm here tonight, not just, um, here on behalf of the Midwest Theater, but I feel like I'm here on behalf of every little kid that gets the opportunity to come to the Midwest Theater and to watch a show, I'm here on behalf of every, um, senior citizen that's, was a little kid, that got to go to a show and is now, um, an adult, um, every artist that has the opportunity to perform on the Midwest Theater stage, whether they're, um, from international or from somewhere else in the country, or they're one, uh, a local artist that has the privilege to perform at the, on the stage. Um, just this weekend, we have been showing the fiftieth anniversary of Jaws, and that has been, um, just the funnest thing in the whole world, to have, uh, everyone that had saw, it premiered in mid, at the Midwest Theater fifty years ago, and I've had, uh, um, projectionists that have come in this weekend, who were the projectionists that screened it fifty years ago, and those that saw it for the first time. I actually never saw Jaws all the way through, um, but I was one of the ones that saw it for the first time this weekend and screened. So a little bit about just going, I don't wanna repeat what's already in your package, but just some expanded things to go along, um, with what is there. Um, we will be, um, putting safety first with, um, our lighting, um, and updates, um, accessibility, and, um, our production quality, which is why, um, I put the Darcy Lynn that's coming, we are actually having artists reach out to us. Um, I, I'm sure that you're all aware that Larry the Cable Guy, um, was here and came, for those of you that may have had the opportunity to go, um, but we didn't book Larry, he actually came to us, and he went to high schools throughout the other parts of the country, or the, the state, but when they were looking for a venue here, they saw, they went to our website, on our website, we, we actually have a, a drone video that, um, a former graduate that, from here, that's a drone pilot now in Lincoln, he was here and he did it for me for free, and it's on our website now, and so when they're looking, artists are looking, they, they go on our website, they look at the drone video, and they're like, we, we wanna perform in, in that space. So, Darcy Lynn, I did not reach out to her, I didn't try to book her, um, her agent actually reached out to me and said, um, we were looking, we're routing through your area, and we were just gonna skip over that, your area, and then we saw your venue, and can we make it, can we make this happen? What will it cost us, um, to make, to make this work? She's selling out in every place that she's working, and those are the kinds of acts that we're trying to get, but with our lighting, we're not gonna be able to, to make that happen if we can't, um, with those kinds of performers. Um, the community impact that the Midwest Theater has, um, it's an economic ripple effect, um, events at the Midwest Theater bring foot traffic to downtown businesses, restaurants, shops, hotels, um, that benefit directly from our programming. Our youth engagement is out of this world. Um, every show that we, that comes to, it's just part of our mission, it's part of our vision, they have to, when we bring an act, um, they have to contract that they'll do youth engagement, that they'll do a youth show. We have to turn schools away, um, and, because we're over seven hundred, um, students that come to our shows, and over fifty percent of those students that, that come are Scottsburg students that are coming to our shows. Um, the workshops are, that are inspiring another generation. The workshops are that are inspiring another generation of creatives and leaders. They don't just do a show with our kids, they share a vision of what can be and what brought them to that, to be at that stage and to be where they are. We're preserving culture, investing in the theaters, investing in the soul of our city. I love that video that we did that has music that, that's with it, and it's kind of like this catchy little tune. And if you haven't seen it, you need to go on our website. But it literally takes you through, the drone starts outside and it comes in through the theater, and it just takes you all the way through. It takes you inside through the theater, and it comes back out. And it says, "The Midwest Theater, Scotts Bluff Soul." And it's literally how I feel about what that that space is and who I get to interact with on a daily basis. The people that come from out of town or from in town is, it's about our shared heritage and being alive and vibrant in downtown. The financial responsibility, we feel it at the theater. It's not something that we take for granted. We've already secured a $75,000 grant from the Oregon Trail Foundation. We, every year in our budget, put aside $25,000 for these upgrades. We never imagined that we would have somebody come in and tell us that your lighting board is not going to be, like, it's just not going to be non-existent. And, but I believe that the Oregon Trail Foundation demonstrates a strong community and philanthropic support for what, for what the theater means to our community. The requested 50,000 from the city would complete the funding puzzle, allowing us to move forward without delay. I just found out today that the board is 82,000, just the board alone, not counting the lighting fixtures, that we can't get bulbs for anymore or anything else, is $82,000 alone. We're committed to transparency and stewardship for every dollar that will be used to maximize the impact and the longevity of, of this project. We're not asking for a handout. We're asking for a partnership with the City of Scotts Bluff. We believe that the, the Midwest Theater is literally the heart and soul of our community. I think I put it in the front, all of our surrounding towns, they have the Bluffs, they have the monument, they have Chimney Rock. And I think if you look at your, our own city website, it is the Midwest Theater that is used as what we use as representation for what Scots Bluff City, Scots Bluff is. It's a partnership in preserving, preserving history, enriching lives, and building a future where Scots Bluff continues to shine as a cultural hub. And with your support, we can ensure that the lights never dim on this historic landmark. And I would welcome and love any questions that you have for me.
So do you have financials?
Financials, as far as our, our budget and stuff like that?
Any historic?
Um, I, did I not send that with the original, um, our budget for the year? No, but I, that is a complete oversight on my part. I would, I thought that that budget was in with my original, but I'd sent over to Kevin.
Kevin would disqualify under, like, keynote? Have she put an application in?
Yeah, I think community betterment would be the best fit. You know, the only other alternative is community programming, and the spirit of that fund is really tourism. And the Midwest is, is not that. The data shows that 48% of the people going to the Midwest are from Scots Bluff. Garing's another big chunk. So that would turn us towards keynote funds and the community betterment. Just, just so you guys know, the keynote fund is in pretty good shape right now. Since COVID, we really haven't spent much. We didn't, we didn't need to, and we couldn't for a while. So that has accumulated a little bit. It's just under $400,000. I do see that getting spent down, and we'll be back to 60,000, 65,000 annually. You know, the keynote funds is something that we don't want sitting in our account. That is money that we want out into the community for community betterment, so.
Is that something you think that your board would be willing to do, is apply for, like, the keynote funds? Is there a formal application process for ours?
No, we're working on a, a policy and an application. So that's why Krista put this packet together.
For, for city keynote funds?
So I know we, we had some discussion through the week on it, but I think most of us are for helping you. It was the amount was a little bit bigger than what we're used to seeing. And we're a little more comfortable if we have some criteria to go by, you know, before we approve anything, some structure to it. Right now, we have no limit on the amounts, and we try and do smaller and divide the money out more.
As, as we're working on this policy and this process, I went and I found an agenda item from 2013, and pretty much all of that keynote fund was spent in the city. It was playground equipment, it was landscaping, it was all city projects. That's the way it's traditionally been spent, so.
But we've done a pretty good chunk of city stuff through ARPA funds, correct?
You know, and that, that's something that I didn't mention, Jerry. That's another reason that we haven't spent the keynote funds down is because we're-
We've been using that money.
Yeah, we're spending the ARPA funds, and we have to have those spent by December of '26. So that's been our priority, too.
Can I just ask a little bit about the numbers? You had 150 budgeted, you've raised 100. Between your electrician, sound system, and ADA, that's another 50. He said the light board is 82, so that leaves like 28K.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're with that, the light board came in higher than what I did, what we had expected. But, so we'll probably, I'll probably have to go raise some more money, honestly.
I had no idea light boards were that expensive.
They weren't that expensive before, before tariffs.
Oh, yeah.
Because they're, they're all over.
It's made overseas.
It's made overseas, yeah.
What, what was the original budgeted amount for the light board?
Um, 50.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, that's a big job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, but that isn't reflected in you, right?
That cross increase?
The, yeah, no, the light board, that's, yeah, the, the original budget of 150,000.
Oh, it's included in this one?
It's included in that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, but for it to come back at 82,000 was about a $32,000 jump in, in cost, so.
So just generally, when the, you said you don't, some of these, the performers or acts or whatever you want to call it, come to you, how often does that happen?
It's happening more and more, like, within probably the last two, two to three years. Yeah, because there's a rep, we're getting, they're talking amongst themselves. So like Sean Johnson, who's our Christmas act this year, he requests, he's been here before, and then he requested to come back again because he loves the space and he loves the community. The, the community's so warm and just, he always loves the audience that he gets when he's here. And so he, he called and, and then I was able to negotiate a, a better price with him because I was like, well, I wasn't expecting to, and he's like, please have me back, I'll take a cut in my-
That's always good.
That's nice.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's happening more and more. And we're, the Darcy Lynn show, when he called, I said, how are you, how did you even hear about us? And he's like, the Midwest Theater is coming up as a, like, when, they have some kind of, when they search, you know, for, he's like, you're coming up as a, however he, he said it, but we're, we're as a quality performing arts establishment.
From other performers that have been there or from visitors or what?
Yeah, I think, I think amongst bookers and, but it's the space, it's the people, it's everything.
Just out of curiosity, had something like that, was there ever any consideration? And I don't know the details of booking and all of that, but any, any note, thought to the notion of more than a one and done? Like, maybe two, two performances, three?
It's funny that you would say that because the, this show that's next, our opening act that's next week, they're doing two shows. Yeah, actually, well, three, because they're doing a educational outreach and then.
I, I just say that thinking out loud because I was wanting to get some tickets to one of the performers you mentioned earlier. And I was in a call right away, and I was 10 minutes, two, like, 10 minutes into the sale of tickets.
Yeah.
Me too.
So maybe there's more opportunity.
Yeah, yeah. We're taking the, the one next week outside of the theater as well because that's part of our mission, is to take the Midwest up to the people a little bit, too, so. But.
Any other questions?
So, or we, maybe you've had me thinking about this all day amongst a couple of other things. But it just, the, we have a pretty good fund balance, but I get, kind of like I was concerned about the soccer groups, trying to kind of worry about some other group nonprofit, that's like, you know, where's my 50,000? And so without a process, I'd be, I'd be more comfortable with having some kind of a process very quickly that we can kind of have a basis to, to do stuff more.
I was thinking long-term, too. Right now, there is a healthy balance, but like, if we run 65,000 a year, like, large requests, that would knock out a lot of competition. So if we can just draw up some criteria for the future.
Yeah, we will.
So we can spread it out more.
I don't think that process is going to affect this project. I think the information's here. But we will, in fairness, because we see this maybe as a little bit more competitive. I will tell you that when it gets down to 65,000, we might see times where a lot of that does go to playground equipment. That's very expensive, so.
Yeah. What is our current balance again for keynote?
It's 333.
Okay, so we'd still have?
333.
Yeah, we'd still have a significant amount.
And are there any other upcoming keynote requests that you know are coming down the road?
No.
We haven't had any for a long time, have we?
We have not. And traditionally, because we spend them in the city, and the, the people, the organizations that come before you tax for funds are really asking for community programming funds, so, and that's derived from those occupational taxes, taxes. You know, and that's the Bloom Fest, Monument Marathon.
Tourist-based.
Yeah, yeah, Boys and Girls State Golf, groups like that.
So we haven't, I mean, there hasn't been any requests?
Yeah, I can't remember the last one.
Yeah, yeah, and we've never had a process. We've always spent.
Yeah.
On the other hand, I agree with you about the, the, I, I fear what Broadway would look like without the Midwest Theater.
It's a centerpiece.
Yes, the ripple effect. And so that's why I was, I'm kind of scratching my head, but trying to honor some other-
And, and I understand the, with other, other entities, but I, but I would have to argue that there's not another entity in town that, that represents what the, what the Midwest Theater represents to the City of Scotts Bluff.
Krista, as far as you know, has the City of Scotts Bluff ever contributed funds?
No, and we've never asked, we've never asked for funds from the City of Scotts Bluff before.
You know, and we've talked about kind of our structure and how we're not allowed to spend taxpayer money on stuff like this, so we've had some good conversations.
Keynote is pretty broad. I mean, it's community betterment's pretty broad. I did watch Jaws 50 years ago, by the way.
You did?
At the Midwest Theater.
Yeah, we, this has never been, I mean, this, this isn't a pattern that we're starting for.
I would make a motion to approve the funding request to be taken out of the existing keynote funds at this time without a process.
I'll second.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
I think the discussions that you've provided with the background of historic stuff helped me ease my angst a little bit of how we've done.
And so on that, Kevin, going forward, can we draw up something this fall? So we have some guidelines on the amounts?
I think we'll have it done soon.
Okay, that, that put us at ease a little bit going forward.
Yeah, we started to do some research. We'll get a, a policy put together and then an application.
Okay.
And, and of course, you do know I'm a proponent of not collecting and keeping cash, getting it spent down a reasonable amount, so.
Yeah, keynote is one of those funds that should be out doing community done things.
It's a nice presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Call the roll, please. McCarrigan, yes. Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Be canceled to discuss and consider action on the services contract with Interlinks Inc. and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
And Mayor I, or Vice Mayor I, am going to declare a conflict there?
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the conflict?
Sure. A motion to approve his conflict.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Solomon, second by Stricker. Call the roll, please. Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so councils are discussing, consider action on the services contract with Interlinks Inc. and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Mayor and council, this is an agreement with Interlinks. They approached us about going to a monthly payment. They've explained that this will, in the end, save the city some money, $4,000 to $5,000. And this will be a monthly fee, and it'll be the $7,500 figure you see in the agreement for managed services. And then outside of that will be our backup fee, which is the data alto, which was a monthly fee that we talked about at the last meeting. So that'll be outside of the agreement. So it'll be those two figures. It's all the work. You know, when we, every, every year, we upgrade computers, so they spend a tremendous amount of time bringing those computer towers or laptops, whatever, whatever they have, installing all of our software and getting that hardware implemented. They do all of the management of our servers. So there's a lot of work. I, I know different departments consume a lot of time.
PD.
Yeah. But, you know, they, they do a lot of work for the police department, too, so, and, and the other departments as well. So we kind of pantered this back and forth a little bit and defined managed services fees and the other, what was outside. We defined that to include one backup per day. Those were some things that we kind of got hung up on, but we think it's a good agreement. And if Scott has anything to add.
What I would add, just want to walk that-
What I would add, just want to walk back and say, Mayor and Council, what I would add is we, basically we are adding five different services to the contract. We're doing a security awareness training, password management, Microsoft 365 monitoring service, which is a really great tool that allows us to stay on top of things if something, somebody does get their email breached, we get notifications really quick and we can jump on top of it. And then backup of their, of the Office 365 email stuff and then monitoring and patch management. We have an agent that we install on all the machines, so we can remotely access the machines, which is really nice to help the users out. We also get alerts on whether they get low on drive space. We also can then remotely push out Windows updates once a month and then we also update the servers once a month and reboot them, so.
And that's part of the managed services?
Yeah.
Okay, so the only thing outside of that is that?
Is the data backup, Seattle, Alto. Yeah, the data, the data will actually back up every hour, all the servers, and then once a day it gets replicated offsite, so.
Any sense on what, if, if it was just like a smorgasbord type, what the savings would, this savings would be?
Well, I can tell, what I can tell you is, Jerry, we were averaging, the last two and a half years, we averaged 53 hours a month to the city, between all the departments, between library, public safety, and then we got along to everything all together. Times that, times an hour, or 110 bucks an hour currently, it's 55, $5,500 roughly per month, so.
That's more of the managed service, though, not, not the adult, the others still separate?
This is, this is what we, yes, yeah.
And then Scott, you guys are on call then, so if we would have any virus attacks or ransomware?
Yeah. We get those occasions for that. We have a person that's on call all day, every day.
Nighttime, whole works.
Weekends, weekends it seems like are when we tend to get stuff, but overnight, of course, we're not sitting staring at our phones, but first thing in the morning, our on-call person checks their emails, makes sure there's nothing weird going on.
Okay.
So the meat and potatoes are a, kind of a predictable savings advantage to this?
Yeah, yeah, you know, not long ago, I think you seen an $18,000 bill, you're going to see that $7,500 figure every, every month plus the backup fee. That's, that's what you're going to be seeing.
How much does the backup fee usually run, do you know?
I want to say it's like, I mean, PD has their own backup, we have a backup vice chair and then there's one with library. I want to say it's like, I want to say 25, that's not bad. Yeah.
Is it done in one month?
I just thought Chris, like 50 a month.
Yeah.
I didn't open those invoices.
2500? 2500?
Yeah, roughly.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
No, move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Solomon, second by Stricker. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Solomon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
All right. 12, council reports, informational only. This item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members of meetings attended since the last city council meeting. Do we have any updates?
Heartland Express was wonderful, good information.
Good barbecue too in Alliance.
And what's that?
Good barbecue.
Oh, yeah, good barbecue in Alliance if you want to go there.
So I was going to ask you two, what other cities were there?
Um, with Gearing and Kim Rowland. Alliance was there.
Chadron.
Sydney was there. There was actually Adams Trucking from Sydney was there.
Okay.
They were supportive of the project.
I feel like Moral may have been there.
Yeah.
There's some unity in the panhandle.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, their, their presentation makes a bunch of sense.
And Lauren Gardino out of Texas was there.
Oh, wow.
So, he's very active, very in tune at the federal level, so.
Oh, forget it, Zio.
Oh.
Oh, you want to go?
Yeah, you guys okay with the highway stuff? Okay. So I was going to give you an update on the mountain lions, which, so, this is one of the videos of Jasper and Jade. Jade's a smaller one, of course. So Jasper came from Washington State and Kai, you can correct me if I have the wrong data, but in May of 2024 from Washington and he was 24 pounds, obviously he's way bigger now. Jade came in March about, not quite a year later, 2025. And so I just talked to one of the keepers and I guess they're doing really well. It looks like they're fighting really intense, but it's just like your cats at home playing around. So they're actually getting along really well and they still have the cat scratching post that someone had donated by the public and Jade still loves that thing. I think she's probably too big for it, but...
She squeezes it.
Yeah. So they both love to play, it's like cats at home, they have a large ball and then there's a barbell toy, I guess, that Jade plays around with still because she's young.
Yeah, and that was actually donated by, by a member of the community.
Okay.
They'd heard from another zoo about a mountain lion, really annoying this specific cat, and so they donated the money.
And after nuns, I guess, they've been taking naps together, having their cat naps. And then their treat, they love sardines, so sardines wins them over. And they're doing great, yeah.
My husband, 203.
Yeah, I love my sardines.
And Kai, the most recent one was orphaned in the state of Washington?
Yeah, so she was found by provisional wildlife services up in Utah and they had monitored her and weren't happy with it and told her, and he got that question to the mountain lion, it's a survival, species survival plan, so they're looking for zoos that they could get together and say, hey, focus on the species. As a single zoo, you're not going to be able to make too much of an impact, but as a network, you can have an effect, so that, that's what she...
In, in just about every one of those animals out there have, have a story. It's not like these animals are being captured in the wild and brought to a zoo, so everyone has a story.
And then, anyway, the public's out invited to go see them. I mean, it's been a long process because you guys remember when the cage was wide open, that's when it started. It took forever to get that done, but it's, it's built and it's good to have two mountain lions again in there, there's a lot of life back on that side of the zoo again, and so it's a positive experience.
Yeah, it's been really, really good. We were very nervous, like nervous the first day, obviously, everyone was there with horns and hose pipes and getting ready to go, you know?
To separate them.
Yeah, to separate them and, you know, they came out straight away and we were expecting them to, you know, we were expecting the whole team to be there for three, four hours and within half an hour we were, okay, we can drop half the team off and everyone definitely went out to work, so it's been super positive so far. That was about two weeks ago, so still early days, but very positive so far.
And then the banquet's coming up. Kevin's going to go, I'm going to go, maybe Scott?
Yep.
Jerry? Maybe Kim? So you're all invited, if you want to go, bring your kids. Lane, if you want to bring your kids to it.
James is not eligible.
So, okay.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a second.
No, a second.
Okay, call the roll, please. Phillips.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.